All right, we'll be, uh, Mike O'Brien to address the board regarding recent splotes and recreation. Todd, you want to go ahead and?
Hi, Mike. This is Mike O'Brien. I've known Mike for many years. He's, uh, lived in Columbus for a long time. John O'Brien was his dad, was on the rec board for many years. Mike officially moved back to town, kind of helped his dad out. He wanted to address the board about the recreation splotes and what for.
Appreciate being here this morning. Uh, I did address the Troop County Parks and Rec Commission, and they said that there was no way that I could have any discussion in five to 10 minutes. Uh, I'm here to prove it. Uh, I've, I've got to work off a sheet just to be brief and highlight my points. I think I've got some pretty serious charges. But I allege that the splotes rules require that the voter had the right to know what he's voting on in post-election. Only one has been voted on and the splot may be implemented. I'm alleging that the voters were victims of fraud. I allege that the old West Point City Park is now the current park titled Point University Athletic Complex Revision D. In documents, and was designed specifically for Point University by the West Point City Manager in Lance Francis. He's actually an architect and engineer. I say of Point University incorrectly. I think he's, he's with them, but... This is not my version. This is what Mr. Moon, the city manager, and Mr. Francis worked off of. This is Point University Athletic Facility Requirements Revision D, August 8, 2011. And it goes through in great, great detail what a Point University Athletic Facility, meaning all the NCAA and NAIA requirements must do, down to minute detail. Revision D. I assume that there was an original, a revision A, revision B, revision... A lot of time and effort was put into this. A lot of time and effort into the Point University Athletic Facility Requirements. I have just a, a, a point about that. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, I have copies of information at back that I just want to read. One between Mr. Francis and Mr. Moon. It says, I'm, this is Mr. Moon. "I'm not accustomed to working with the current situation. The architect on a city project being funded by a separate entity. Point University funded the engineering of that park. But I must say that I feel the process is not going very well at this time. I recommend that the team," that would be he and Point University engineers, "begin to work together or we will need to discuss how this is structured." Ladies and gentlemen, it's a Point University Athletic Facility, as it's arrived. Moving along, I allege that the opening fall collegiate season deadlines were impossible to meet without a bond issue. Such a bond was passed that cost to West Point of over $140,000 in issuance fees and over $460,000 in interest. This is documented in email conversations. I have a copy of the bond. The bond was a $4.5 million bond. It cost $140,000 just as a cost of issuance. I assume that's attorney's fees and, you know, New York Stock Exchange, whatever. We're paying $460,000 interest. When I was asking people about the bond, I got a lot of anecdotal stories. Oh, we will invest that money and we'll turn a profit off the bond. We will be saving construction costs because, uh, not, not only was I business graduate, uh, I was a math teacher. The math doesn't add up. The only justification for that bond is to rush the project. We have a gym that is open, has been functional since August, is this week completed a volleyball season, intercollegiate volleyball season. Tonight is the home opener of the basketball team. No public has used it yet. There was no reason to rush this project other than for Point University. And there are documents to that effect. They talk about when they have to be in this facility, when they have to be in this facility. Uh, I have well over 300 pages of documents.
Who else will be using that facility?
In, in the end, uh, it's supposed to be the citizens of West Point. There, there is mid, mid football that has been played on that ball field. I'm not going to say there has been none.
I'm talking about in the gym. You were talking just like it was just a Point University.
Well, the city manager, in his response to an earlier complaint, said that the gym has not been open to the public for seven years. Why should it be open now? No public has used it to date. Now, I'm assuming that there will be Pee-wee basketball games there. And historically, there have been, you know, square dances or crap. You know, what recreation would you use a gym for? So, so I don't allege that there will be zero facility there. But it has not been used to date by the public.
Then my understanding would be used by the recreation department as it hasn't passed for Kenla Hockey, Basketball, Cheerleading, Tumbling, those kind of events?
Okay. Uh, I allege that in no time for the splot voters expect to see investing millions of dollars in an athletic complex and all the cities being given by contract exclusively to Point University. The city of West Point had entered into a contract with Point University, uh, that I think is horrible. And I will be addressing the city, ask them to redo that. That's not a county fund, let's say. I do have a specific county question, and I won't belabor that point. But that contract is complete evidence of, of who's running that park and whatever. And the contract does give Point University exclusive right to the first floor of that facility by contract. Significant bodies are spent. All of their coaches' offices except football, which is probably about 10 or 15. You've got a softball coach, assistant softball, baseball assistant baseball, men's and women's basketball. The soccer coach does men's and women's, but it is for their exclusive use in, in the contract. And there's no way that the voters would, that would know that that was going to happen. I think they cheated the voters. You could vote for a stadium to build for the Atlanta Falcons. You vote for it and you choose yes or no. I'm not alleging that private money can never, that public money can never go to a public entity, to a private entity. But this has been, done absolutely well. And, uh, I allege that. I allege that the contract was set up with Point University making token payments to the city, which give them legal rights as tenants. I argue the agreement for the city makes the city appear much worse to the Indian who traded bees for Manhattan Island. I allege an unhealthy transfer of public funds to a private enterprise. Uh, for the softball field that they converted to an NAIA ball field with first class grading, lighting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, and the city by contract, or the county, that's my question at the end of my presentation, has agreed to maintain and pay out the utilities for, for the first year. Point University will pay $0. For the second year, Point University will pay $0. And then the third year goes up. And there's a copy in the contract. But the same thing with the baseball field, that we're spending significant dollars on. Have not yet put the sign on that they're going to open up the season January 30th with a doubleheader, uh, which is, is ridiculous. Uh, but for the first year, zero. Second year, zero. For the football, soccer complex, the same thing. For the gym, the same thing. For the basement, uh, that they have exclusive use of, that we spent major, major money. I hope you guys have toured it. They will rent that facility for $5,040 per year, or a little over $400 a month. I think that's ridiculous. Uh, number, number five. I allege that the city has now made it difficult for me to collect evidence by using Acton City Attorney Jeff Todd to restrict my access to the city manager and require me to jump through legal hoops to collect information. Early on, I've been using the request for open records, and I have a lot of embarrassing things, uh, and I think things that totally back up, uh, my allegations. Again, I'm not here to prove anything. Uh, I'm not smart enough. I'm not an attorney. What I'm here is to show that there are enough questions that I'm asking for an investigation. I'm not, I'm not saying that my way is the right way. I'm the smartest person in the room. My pardon. I'm, and, but I'm telling you that enough has occurred and, and, and that there, I allege that the voters were victim of fraud and the splot was done totally illegally. And there's, there's a transfer of public funds to a private enterprise that has not been done above or... That is, I'm not here to convince you to, to do anything other than I'm asking you to conduct an investigation. That's what I'm asking you to do.
Let me ask a question, Dan.
Yes, sir.
You, you're really talking about splot dollars, right?
Well, the bond is 4.5 million guaranteed by the, by the, uh, 6.5 million that West Point's going to get. Uh, it's my understanding, again, I don't claim to be the smartest in the room. I'll say a correction. The splot collections don't even start till January 1st.
That's correct.
So, we're, we're spending bond money backed by the splot that will come in. And the, the bond payments are based upon the city's estimate of when things will come in. The, the payments for the bond, the interest rate is between 2 and 4 percent. It's pretty complicated, and they have different, certain dates that a certain amount of money is due, which is part principal, part interest. And, and why some is 2 and some is 4 is a little above me. But, so the splot hasn't even been collected yet. So technically, we're spending bond money guaranteed by the splot receipts. Is that it?
I, I believe that's right. Is that right, Mr. Moon?
Okay. Well, when you, when the voters voted for the splot money, within this, in that, what I'm getting to you other than that, my understanding of splot money, you put it on the ballot.
Yes, I have a copy of the ballot.
The voters voted for, hired it to be spent.
Yes.
You know, the splot and I, and I got kicked with this question the other day. They say if the Griggs center wouldn't have voted for the splot, if y'all had went with us, the splot would have never passed. The voters was voting for a specific use for the splot money.
Yes, sir. May I add something I didn't read?
They were voting for a specific use for the splot money.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding about splot, whatever is on that ballot, and the voters understand what they're voting for, that's the only thing that you can spend the splot money for. After it's voted in, you cannot go back and change and spend it however you want to.
Yes, sir. And I think you're making my point. And what I would like to say is, uh, I think that a lot of ruses and back developments have been done. One of the things that I kept hearing as I began this is, the, the, uh, the, uh, the splot, the citizens of West Point wanted improved recreational facilities. And that turned us into an NAIA sports facility. Well, if you guys have seen the commercial where there's a baby in high chair, and I, I think it's Kimbo or something, and he asks, asks the child, "Don't you want free money?" He throws M&amp;M's at him and spits. Everybody wants free money. Well, who doesn't want better recreational facilities? If you ask them, "Do you want worse? Do you want the same? If you want better?", people are going to say the same. And they have taken that, that ridiculous comment and turned it into NAIA ball field. Even Jennifer Schrader, she covered these. When I, when I first got involved, I assumed that I would go on the internet and I'd say all the, the things about Point University and, and, you know, that, that's what the people... No mention of Point University, but I caught an article by Jennifer Schrader that I have a copy of here. And her article, she attended one of the meetings, and she reported that the citizens of West Point say that their parks are overused and they can't play pickup games and, and just make random games anymore because the parks are so overused. And that's what they want. That was her comment. Well, now, we have an area that every field, every field is locked, and, uh, you can't throw a frisbee in that, in that place. There, there is no pickup game. And I could give you anecdote after anecdote after anecdote about what's going on over that park. I did that at the Recreation Center, and they thought I'd never shut up. Uh, I, I took, so, were you there?
We touched on it.
Oh, okay. Did you think I'd never shut up?
We, we said yes.
Oh, oh, and participated. I, I brag about the, the warmth that you guys gave. So, I'm not doing that here, you know, unless, but, but there are a lot of people upset. A lot of people. And I would say that another thing I heard when I started was that everybody knew what was going on, and everybody liked it. Well, that's not true.
Well, let me ask one more question, Dan. The ball fields, the gyms, that's on, was it on Highway 29?
Yes, sir.
Going in?
Yes, sir.
The, the citizens of that part of Troop County has no access to use that gym or their ball field. Is that what you're saying?
Well, they're locked, and they're not being made available. They're made available to Point University all over the place. There are students that have keys to those places. They will, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to disagree with my friend Todd Chandler, that over time, they will use them. I have been to two 11 or 12-year-old Pee-wee football games, the West Point Raiders and the West Point Redskins, on the field. I, I don't have to exaggerate to make a point. They have been used by the citizens of West Point in minor controlled circumstances. Uh, but, uh, they have not been developed for the benefit of the citizens of West Point. It is a Point University Athletic Facility requirements that, that I'm sure that the citizens of West Point, under close, careful, uh, things, will have some access to. But that gym, in August, in August, I was walking to get my, I got my car fixed at a place, a lot of railroad tracks, and I was walking by, and I just decided to see what was going on in the gym. This is in August. I walked in, and there was the men assistant coach and the men playing on one end, the girls assistant coach and the girls playing on the other end. They, signs all over the wall, like cheerleaders and fraternities put up. I did not know, they'd already had a home volleyball game. This is in August. And I, it hit me. I said, "This thing's ready." And, and I did not know the contract. I, I, I'm not a political activist. This is the first time I've ever done anything. Mike Pitts, the City Recreation Director, Don Harold, and, and Todd, and said, "Guys, this thing's finished. They've played a half dozen ball games on the, on the field. The gym is open and all. Let's have an open house. Get everybody down here." And I was all for them. I'm saying, "Come on." And, and, and I even told them what to do. I said, "On the football field, just get the Troop High School band, the, have a couple of midget teams play a 10-minute running clock. Leave there." We spent between $15,000 and $20,000 for portable restaurants for Point University. Uh, the gym was ready, and, and, and they rented. I've got documents of this, $4,800 per month. Uh, in fact, I've got documents where Mr. Moon and Mr. Francis discussed all of the temporary money spent for Point University are cost and taken away from the project. This is an athletic complex. Go look. Go see what your line is. It is a Point Athletic, Point University. And I lost the point I was trying to make.
You're talking about the whole complex is Point University?
Uh, no, no. The, the ball fields in the back, the lily ball fields, uh, that were there are still there. There, there are some, about five or six ball fields. I think it was a splot in 2002 to 2003.
Well, I don't too...
And, and, and they're, they're used for lily. And then there's a little, uh, I don't, I don't mean to sound bad. I just don't have small kids. Well, I call it a glorified Burger King playground, uh, that's by a parking lot. And then everything else down there is locked, under lock and key.
Well, I've been going down there the past month, every Tuesday night, my grandbaby's soccer game, and I, and I've been seeing the little boys play football up here. I've seen 50 to 75 kids on that Burger King park, uh, playground you're talking about. And I saw soccer teams here, soccer teams here, and soccer teams here, and just an abundance of people from West Point, from Grange. I mean, you know, I, I know what's wrong. Been down there all the month.
I...
Yeah, they've played an entire season of soccer and football, youth football at those fields.
Well, the, now, what I'm talking about is the three Point University athletic fields, softball, baseball, and football. It's unaffected by the parks and the, the little ball fields in the back.
This was the football field.
Right. Well, I've been to two games. I watched an unbelievable, unbelievable midget football game, ending in 0-0. I saw Phil Jones at the Valley Times News and told him he needed to get a recorder over there. It was unbelievable. And well coached and, and, and a lot of fun. And I went to the West Point Raiders game. They played an undefeated team from LaGrange. And, and LaGrange was beloved. And so, no, I'm not alleging that there has been zero use. What I am alleging is, uh, and I could get and go, and go, and go, is everybody has told me, everybody, that what, all the officials, that what they've done to these parks has not taken away from the kids. They're still going to get to use... Nobody has ever said it's done anything for them. Nobody has ever said, "We're going to do so much more." And if I may, and, and I'll wrap up and I don't take questions off and on, but I do have a specific question that, uh, as you say, I'm too organized. In the contract with the city of West Point, I'm holding right here, it requires, this is a copy of the fee schedule. I mean, it's got everything and then some, and I've got some major issues with the city of West Point that the party interests me. But it does, it's got some very significant requirements of West Point. And it's got, it outlines Point University's ability to appeal. Uh, but it requires that West Point Parks and Rec to maintain the quality of the field by mowing, fertilizing, seeding, irrigation, and scheduled maintenance. West Point Parks and Rec will maintain lighting, drainage, and maintenance and support structure. The city of West Point will supply water and sewage at no charge. West Point Parks and Recs will pay for electric at all fields. Well, it's my understanding, and I went to Todd and some others, West Point Parks and Rec is funded by the county. How can the city of Point University enter into a contract talking about all the county funds? So, uh, I was told that the county had agreed with West Point that they would not pay any more funds than, than currently do. That they pay so much today and, and with the expansion that they would pay. There's a significant cost maintaining NAIA ball fields. But the county said that they told the city of West Point that the city of West Point would have to pick up any additional cost. So I took them at the word, and I went to Mr. Moon with an open records request for the change in the relationship, what it was to change. And I got a response from Mr. Moon that not only was there no written contract of any change, but there was no word, that absolutely nothing had changed. Well, that gets it back. This document between the city and Point obligates the county unless something has changed. And per Mr. Moon, not only had nothing changed written, nothing at all had changed. So, if I'm reading the document right, and, so, so I guess I'll stop here and ask the question. Are you guys going to maintain those ball fields? And if you don't, the city would have to do it, and that's, nobody in the city knows it. And it will come from the operating funds of the Parks and Rec. And we will have a lot less problems. Who is going to maintain those ball fields?
Mr. O'Brien, the question that we said in the Parks and Rec was, there's no West Point Parks and Rec as far as we knew. And our knowledge from there said that your contract, or the contract between Point University and West Point Parks and Recreation Department, somehow that's going to be in a legal field. Because, you know, I don't know whether it's right or wrong to do that, and that's not for us to answer. And that's the reason we kind of made the acquisitions, that this is more of a West Point situation with the city of West Point, and your concern with Point University. You know? Because I don't see where the taxpayers are going to pick up the West Point Parks and Recreation.
I definitely...
You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, I'm agreeing. I don't want to be rude, and it's not my...
No, I know you're not.
I would like for Mr. Moon to respond. If, if that's reasonable, is that unreasonable?
We'll sort of have to, Mr. Moon.
Well, it's, uh...
We got to see with our attorney.
Okay.
You know, I'm not going to sit here and address, from a legal standpoint, this body's legal responsibilities or obligations with what I've heard here. This is, this is all new to me. This is my first indoctrination, so to speak, at what Mr. O'Brien's being said. So I'm certainly not equipped now to make any kind of comment. And even if I were, I would not make at this particular meeting any kind of legal comments.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Now, as far as Mr., as far as Mr. Moon is concerned, uh, you know, I, I see no, I see nothing that puts obligation or responsibility on him to address anything at our work session here today. That's strictly up to what, what he would like to do. But I, you know, you can, you can ask Mr. Moon to comment, but Mr. Moon doesn't have to comment.
I, I, of course.
Not at our, not at our work session.
No, sir, of course. And I, I, I was almost, if he wanted to, but, but I withdraw the comment or whatever I should do. But it, it is unclear.
Yes, sir.
It's very unclear. And, uh, I'm, I'm asking for this, this body to ask for an investigation of the splot. If we have a Point University Athletic Complex, I allege that was not explained to the voters in any way, shape, form, or fashion, and that is illegal and wrong. And I'm not here to prove that. There are, there are a million things. I've been unable to get a timeline. Uh, there are some, there are some things. Uh, there was a, a study done by Point University about the economic benefits of those ball fields. I have a copy of the, the, the study. They estimated that over a 10-year period, there would be a $500,000 benefit to the city of, of West Point. That's their economic study. I can't believe it wasn't done prior to this. I don't think the timing mattered. I think if they built a athletic complex, if, if they didn't plant it before the splot and then decide two months afterwards, "That's what we do," I think they're cheating the voters either way. But I'm not smart enough to conduct an investigation. I don't have subpoena power. But I, I, there is a lot of evidence that things happened before. I can't prove it. I can't stand here and prove it. There are a lot of things. The, uh, one of the, uh, open records, not open record, one of the public input meetings or whatever that Mr. Joe Thaniel attended. Uh, I know that, uh, uh, one person that was on the Recreation Committee that, that was disbanded, and I've got a copy of his email. Uh, he said he went to, and it was supposed to be an open discussion. He said there were 60 Point University students with blue t-shirts on them, that it was a pep rally. And he left. He was disgusted. This was a member of Recreation Committee meeting. Uh, I, I know that Point University was involved prior to the vote. Now, can I allege that this was set up? There was, there was, there was some other anecdotal things that it investigated, but it might not even matter, because I still allege that building a Point University Athletic Facility is not what the splot was about. And I've, I've also heard from city officials that, that they told me, "Mike, you're just looking at this right..." "One of the things we wanted to do was create a revenue stream." Well, a splot is not designed to create a revenue stream. And if you think this creates revenue stream, we spent almost $20,000 for two backboards. Uh, these are the high-tech, in-beings style. Cali Williams took a look at it with me. Uh, they are, uh, they have the 35-second time clock or any time clock that you want. They go red when it's, uh, 10 seconds left to shoot. They go double red when the clock runs out, it's tied into the game clock, the shop clock, and whatever. We spent over $20,000 on those goals, two goals. We spent, uh, we own, uh, they tell them the city of West Point owns one of the portable showers, but we spent between $10,000 and $20,000 on portable showers to keep the Point University athletes clean while the gym was open and, and all the showers weren't ready. For the first two years, we get $10,000 in revenue. This is not a good revenue stream. And if, if it's done for... Also, there are a lot of things that are done that are not capital money. And I, I think, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. But I think that the splot is supposed to be for capital funds only. And again, I, I refer to the comment between Mr. Francis and our city manager. They're discussing the showers and all the expenses they're paying, all the temporary things, and the field's ready for the opening of the collegiate season. And they discuss about themselves, "We've got to be careful. We're spending a lot of money here that will take away from our project." There's also, uh, when you talk money, uh, there's a tremendous amount of dollars in kind done by the city. There are three city utility employees still working there full-time. So when you talk, uh, the, the millions of dollars, I allege that there are hundreds of thousands of other city dollars going into the project that are not documented. Now, two weeks ago, I asked for an open record, all of the, uh, purchase orders and contracts committed to this thing. I have not received them yet. I would think all that would be on computer database. I've done a lot of project management, and I don't know why it would take two weeks. But, uh, I will say that Mr. Jeff Todd, since he got in the picture, my flow of information has dried up tremendously. And I, that's one of the reasons I've gone ahead and brought it up, because I'm not getting good information anymore.
Yes, sir.
It would take a professional. Who knows better? I'm not wording my things correctly or something. Uh, I requested three years' worth of email about something, and, and my response was, "Those records don't exist." Now, if they don't exist, or they're locked, you know, I, I'm not getting answers. But I'm trying to close. I, I appreciate those questions, and I appreciate any debate, but we have a West Point, I talked about Point University Athletic Facility. We have one. And, uh, we didn't go...
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, I, I mean, I still think, Mike, as we talked before, that you need to address this to the West Point City Council.
Well, well.
Um, we will definitely look at any splotch payments when the splotch is started and make sure that all suspensions are done correctly. I still think you should wait and see when this complex is finished and see if you still feel the same way you feel now. But I do think that this should be addressed to the West Point City Council. Most of those things you're talking about are West Point city issues. They voted unanimously to do these things. And, and I think if you think they feel differently, you should be addressing them.
Well, and I will, but if I may say this, I went into this thinking that this, this would happen, that the Troup County Commission would say, "We've done everything right." You know, "We did a splotch. We've done everything right. We have no reason to investigate." And I don't allege Troup County. And then West Point, when I asked them to investigate the splotch, their response is going to be, "We didn't have a splotch." How can West Point investigate a splotch? They didn't have. Troup County had a splotch. So I, I really feel like that I'm, I'm running up against legal law. The, the relationship between Troup County and West Point is a vine. It's tangled and twisted. My father, when I got into this, uh, first of all, he told me I was crazy. Now he thinks that I'm very correct. But he told me, he said, "That you're going to talk to somebody and they're going to tell you this. And you're going to talk to somebody else and they're going to tell you the exact opposite in either one of them." Things changed, things are looked at differently. Uh, he said, when, when he was on the Troup County Commission, West Point, Troup, it was, it was a lot of gray areas and so forth. So, uh, but I, I, I do believe it was a Troup County splotch. I don't believe the people of Hogansville knew that they were voting to build a Point University athletic complex. I think they were cheating. There may be a Muslim community on LaGrange that's not happy building a Point University athletic complex, which is Christian. I'm Christian. I don't have a problem with that. But, but the people that voted on the election, Hogansville, Gabberville, LaGrange, they should have known what they were voting on. And, and a lot of the things, uh, you know, Todd, as far as how the fields are used and all, I really believe my action is going to increase the activity level of the kids and all. I hope it does. I, 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 I hope tomorrow that my kids have forty fifth graders on the basketball court. If I had anything to do with that, I believe it will be used. The football field already has to Pee-wee football game that I have seen, and there'd probably be twenty played there. Again, I don't think I have to exaggerate to make a point. But I don't believe the people of Gabberville that voted on this knew that they were voting for Point University athletic facility.
Well, sir, the only, only thing I can tell you, if there's been a misappropriation of funds, Todd and, uh, Don and all of them needs to meet after you have your meeting with the city of West Point and point these issues out to them and show them and tell them. And, uh, after you go to West Point and see how they feel, sounds like, uh, I, I don't know, uh, how they feel about what you're doing or what you're saying. But I think if there is a misappropriation of funds that Todd and, uh, they will hear.
Well, my, my, my main emphasis is that the voters were cheating. The voters did not know what was on the splotch, and the voters did not do it. So I'm alleging voter fraud. Now, I've talked to a gentleman in Columbus, and he's told me how I would proceed. You go to the attorney general's office and then make your complaint, and that they would investigate it through the GBI. But I have, I, I work the second shift. I bought a house that I rehab in a repo. Uh, my father's not in the best of health. And I'm trying to chase a couple of ladies. I'm recently divorced. My life is full. And I'm willing to step out of this. What I would like to do would be to present this to the right body, such as yourself. And you say that, "He hasn't proven anything, but he has raised some serious questions about the voters' rights in a splotch. Let's get it investigated and show how clean we are." That's what I hope we do. But, but it's not about, uh, whether somebody went to the field and it was locked and another Point University student came by an hour later, pulled his key out, and played on the ball field, locked it, and went back. Uh, it's not about that. It's not about whether tomorrow, uh, they get a bunch of fourth graders in the gym. Because that will happen. Fourth graders will get in that gym at some point and play on those twenty thousand dollar backboards. The point is, were the voters of Troup County.
I understand what you're saying. But if you report back to Todd after you have a meeting with Point, if you need to go further with the state, I, I would do.
I would hope that the county commission would, would see it that way, that I've raised a dumb question.
Yeah. The question that concerned me is that the county wide splotch.
Yes, sir.
Spelled out for certain items and certain things to be accomplished with that county wide splotch.
Have accomplished the ballot. Yes, sir.
And then West Point has splotch money for West Point, five percent, whatever that is, to do what they need to do. And that's left totally up to the West Point City Council to do that. The thing with the county wide splotch, that means we spent county wide for county wide progress.
Yes, sir. My, my point is that the people that voted to approve or disapprove of the splotch were in Hogansville, Gabberville, LaGrange, West Point, and they did not know that there was, that nobody knew that they were going to build an athletic facility for Point University. If it's not on the ballot, then, oh, no, well, it's not now. The ballot says for the recreational deeds and the city landscape, do some city work around the, the, the streets and all. That was part of it. But again, the recreation deeds, my allegation is that the city of West Point, that wanted to build Point University, twisted that and said, "Well, the citizens of West Point want improved recreation facilities. We, we can now build NAI facilities for Point University, throw locks on them." And by playing a few Pee-wee ball games and a few midget ball games, we can allow them. And, and the basement, the basement of that gym, beautiful, beautiful basement, is exclusively to the use of Point University with the exception of one rooms, they tell me about this size, they'll rent out the birthday parks. But they've got coaches, athletics, it's a coaches complex. They've got samnas. They've got training tables. They've got beautiful locker rooms. And, uh, West Point, Point University has exclusive right to those by contract. I'm using the exclusive because that's a word in the contract. And I allege that the voters of Troup County had no reason to expect that and, and were, were not informed of their voting.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Chairman, may I just say one thing on behalf of the city of West Point? There's been about thirty minutes of accusations of fraud. And Mr. O'Brien's entire, um, backroom dealing allegations and allegations of fraud are based upon a premise that he repeated about fifteen times. There has been constructed in West Point, by West Point, for the exclusive use of an independent college, a quote, "Point University athletic complex." Now, perhaps some of what he has said might be problematic if that were true. But, Mr. Davis, you've mentioned what you've been up there to see. This is no secret. There's an agreement between West Point and Point University that outlines the, the uses that they have. Mr. O'Brien, a few times, mentioned the revenue in the first couple of years. He didn't mention the revenue in the last four years, and there's a reason. The revenue in the first couple of years sounded better to his fraudulent argument. There's significant revenue. All West Point is doing is modifying the rec, the recreation facilities to the degree necessary that Point University can use them. It's going to be good for the city of West Point. It's a West Point decision. As for the splotch argument, what is required to be on the splotch ballot is what you're building. It's up to the city of West Point within the law to determine to some degree how those facilities are used. And again, I'm sorry to take up your time, but, um, I just thought, the, the word fraud is a serious word. And, um, the entire house of cards that this fraud argument is built upon is that this is going to be built for, at the, you know, at the cost of millions of dollars, he said, for Point University. And that's just abjectly false. Thank you.
Thank you.